Mr. Kennedy. You mistake me for anybody but Mr. Block.
I did it again. I'm sorry. Mr. Clotter. Mr. Clotter.
Again, I afternoon the school board members as part of our curriculum.
I'm sorry. You know what? I again did it. We have citizens comments. Do we have any green cards? We have no green cards. Mr. Clotter.
As part of our curriculum update today, we've invited Jason Kuhn and Dan Koch from Citrus Springs Middle School to share a presentation with you that he has been giving throughout our district. Again, we never know where stimulation comes from or excitement comes from. And I think that one of the things that Jason actually is excited about was his trip to FETC to actually communicate and network with other districts as far as what the technology is going on in their schools. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Kuhn to come up and share this presentation. He actually has been sharing this with the system principals, with the curriculum folks, and throughout the district. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Kuhn.
And Mr. Kuhn, you can tell the story after you're done.
Thank you so much. I have Mr. Koch would be. He's a language arts teacher at Citrus Springs Middle School. He was, we both created this presentation together because we both went to the conference in January. So we attended the Florida Educational Technology Conference just to see what new digital curriculum strategies were out there and just where we were really in our district. And when we went there, we learned that Citrus County is doing some things far beyond what schools around our country are doing. And when we talk a lot about being in a one-to-one situation, but when Mr. Koch and I were in classes together, when we talked about one-to-one, really, they were talking about every kid just being able to assess a device in the classroom. So when we said, yeah, we're in a one-to-one and a take-home situation, they couldn't believe it. Now, that doesn't mean that other schools around the country are not doing it, but we're just one of the few that are. And that was very, very exciting. Again, and then in paperless instruction, the way that, you know, and I'm gonna speak on Citrus Springs Middle's behalf, you know, the way that we're assigning assignments, passing them out, and having the kids turn them in without using paper with all the different apps and programs that we're using with our iPads, we're far beyond any other schools. A lot of schools would say, you know, we use four apps. And we're like, when they would ask us, well, Citrus Springs, you know, how many are you using? We used like sixty to seventy, because we are using apps that are turned into that content area that really enhances those that classroom, not just to say, you know, whether, you know, some costs are involved. And we work with TRC when we did our pilot program to use some of those paid apps, but in also having the teachers like Mr. Koch to research some of the apps that are free that are still very resourceful in the classroom.
I think that's kind of what we do very well as a school and as a district. It's kind of classroom-specific. It's really not like we use all sixty apps every single day in every single classroom. Basically, what we talk about at each meeting that we have, at school, we talk about at each meeting that we have. I try to invite the staff to come to my classroom, and I have like informal iPad lunches in my classroom just to talk about what apps are working, what apps kind of aren't working so well. And what I would say is try to get good at one app that you want to use in class or one piece of technology. Get good at that one thing, and then sort of roll from there. And if it doesn't work, try something else.
So at the conference, we learned about an instructional strategy called the flipped classroom. And a lot of people are doing it. Sometimes they probably just don't realize what they're doing. And that's really where we have to, and when we talk about flipping the classroom, we really have to talk about changing the way we approach instruction in our classroom. It's not the traditional, you know, I'm gonna teach you, you listen, you write notes, you take them home and study, and then come back the next day. We're gonna flip that all around and change it. So the next couple of slides, we're gonna, I'm really gonna kind of set you up to think about approaching the classroom just a different way. This was a very powerful quote that one of the keynote speakers presented. And it was, you know, what are you doing in your classroom that is for you and not your students? And really, that comes from that teacher that says, you know, I've got this great lesson. I'm very good at it. I've been doing it for ten to twelve years, and my students love it. Well, do they really? And how does, how is it relevant to today's learning with all the technology that we have? So then he followed that up with, what are you willing to unlearn? What are you willing to go back and do differently? Not throw the concept of the lesson out, but revamp it so today's learners are learning it in their style, not our style, where we, when we first created it, whenever that was.
And that's why I've kind of heard it called a shifting classroom, instead of just flipping the entire model around. I was talking to another teacher, and she's kind of implementing some of these strategies. And she's saying, well, let's say I have a lesson, let's say I've been teaching for twenty years, and I've been doing some great stuff. I get good results, too. What's gonna make me want to change what I'm doing? And that's a good question, right? But what she also said was, you know, I can't expect my students to come in and get into a time machine, come to my classroom, and have all this technology, or at least some, available to them in the classroom at that time. So kind of think about that, too.
These are just some other things, you know, tweaking the lesson, never meant to replace good teaching. You know, we can have all the technology in the world, but we still have to have a good plan, that good lesson plan that goes along with that. And I'm gonna kind of rush through these slides. This is really about forty minutes, but Mr. Clotter has given me the evil laugh. I just thought this was a very powerful slide, because we passed out the iPads throughout the district, and we continue to, you know, to pass out more and more. So, you know, we look at the tree, and he says, I was not made to be a worksheet. Then we get these iPads, and he says, well, neither was I. And that's very powerful, because we look at, you know, hey, I got this iPad. What are you doing with it? Oh, man, we looked stuff up on the internet. Well, but it can do so much more. And when I think we have to really kind of dig into all the different resources that that technology, and I say iPad because that's what we have. This is just, it's a slide, it's kind of a metaphor of the different, I guess, conference goers. And I, it's kind of lengthy to read, but I, Mr. Clotter can give you this presentation so you can go back and read some of these little slides later on. I'm gonna let Dan take this slide.
This actually, I thought it was like really smart when I came up with this. Back in two thousand, back in two thousand seven was when the iPhone came out. And I remember watching that keynote, because I'm kind of a nerd, and I watch all the Apple stuff when they come out with new things. Steve Jobs came up, and he said, you know, here's our device. It's an IP, it's an MP3 player. It's gonna play music. It's gonna be internet communications device. It's gonna be a phone, and it's gonna be one device. And he said, it's gonna replace all these other phones. And he had a whole bunch of different phones up there with, you know, keyboards on them. And he said, our phone is gonna replace all these other phones. So it was meant to replace that. But then we get the iPad, and that's actually what our school's adopted. And when they released that just a couple of years later, he said, well, this is meant to come in between. So whereas he said before, the iPhone's meant to replace all the other phones, the iPad comes in between. It's not a phone. It's not gonna do everything that a computer can do, but it's gonna have its own purpose. And I thought that was kind of a good analogy to kind of talk about how we should use it in the classroom. It's not meant to replace anything. So I thought I was a little smart in saying, you know, it should be the post-production of your lesson. It should never come first. It should never be like, how am I gonna use this iPad? So how are you gonna, you know, get the content across? How are you gonna administer a good lesson? And then how am I gonna add technology in later?
Because that was, that was a stumbling block when we first handed out the iPads. Like, well, it won't do what my, it won't do what my laptop can do, but it's not supposed to. It was that piece that just comes in between to supplement that technology from the phone of what almost every one of us has in our pocket today for access to instant information to a MacBook or a Dell or a laptop of anything that you could get to, and then sit down and use it that way. So that, it just made it more mobile, but it's not meant to replace that by any means. So some different ideas. Remember that we're teaching kids and not subjects. And that was pretty powerful. I mean, because we're gonna differentiate quite a bit. And, but the subject stayed the same, but the kids, they changed quite a bit. And it's not just about the facts. It can be about the ideas, too. And that's pretty powerful, because we always come up with things that, we have this great idea, and then we get to the last bullet there, where we talk about problematizing everything. And what is the worst consequence of your best idea? And should that stop that idea? So we had these iPads, and, you know, we're like, oh, we can't pass those out, because the kids are gonna look up dirty stuff on them. Well, should that have stopped all the great instruction that's going on in our classrooms and in our schools at the same time? So that, we really take that out of school and talk about that when we try to implement new things. Should it really stop what's going on, because it's such a great idea, just because of the potential problems that could happen? We know they're gonna happen one way or the other. So the next couple of slides, we see, we see this slide, and then we see this. And then we see this. And so each one of them, you know, when we go back a little bit, we see that they, you know, they keep getting a little bit better. We got a chalkboard, now we got an overhead. You know, that was like the most awesome machine ever until we had to be forced to not buy any bulbs to get rid of them. And then, you know, we got the smart board. And but there's one thing that's in common, and all three slides are all teacher-driven. They all have to have a teacher in front of that to make that work. So this is, we won't play the whole video, but this kind of just sets you up a little bit of what's gonna happen.
In nineteen thirty, the Republican-controlled House of Representatives, in an effort to alleviate the effects of the, anyone, anyone? The Great Depression, passed the, anyone, anyone? The tariff bill, the holy smut tariff act, which anyone raised or lowered, raised tariffs.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're all aware of the conflict in Rwanda, which is now spilling over into Rwanda and Uganda. He's making these names up, he's funny. And on the sentence, one-class differences between the poor and the rich, and the rich are too serious. Working in the bag over the dragon, man, of the room, every citizen is taking.
So we've seen that there's a lot of changes from those videos that happened in classrooms to where we are today. This is a pretty powerful slide that we saw, and we thought we should put here from two thousand five to two thousand thirteen, just the amount of technology that's out there in just everyday use. And this is not a classroom. You know, this is not in a school. This is just out in the public, at a public event, to where people have, are easily accessible to these type of devices.
I think it's not just how they communicate anymore. You think of a phone, you think of it as a communications device. You see, everybody there has a phone, but it's also like a camera, and it's how they access all their information all the time. So it's really not just about one thing. It's about a bunch.
This was a very powerful statement that they, in one of our classes that we attended, it, you know, said, well, you know, all this technology, it just contributes to antisocial behavior. People aren't communicating with each other like they used to. And is that really the case because of what we see? So even in, you know, when we had newspapers, and they'd come out, it's like the best thing ever. You know, we still see the same, you know, some of the same things. So we've really gone from classrooms that look like this to classrooms now to where we're promoting this. And what we're really going after is creating that independent learner in our schools. So I'm gonna, we're gonna do this little video. And this is pretty long, so we really won't do the whole thing. So I'd ask the board to participate if you can. I say, you know, like.
What are you saying?
I'm pretty sure you all have passed this very successfully.
That's one, Jason.
So this is, this would, now, this is kind of an example of what would happen in a classroom, you know? Let's just say this is a, you know, we kind of relate this like to me. It'd be like a physics class. You know, I'm sitting in there, and we're gonna go over this, and I want you to listen and pay attention. I want you to follow along. Then I want you to take this home and practice it, okay? So we'll go, just follow along with the video, because they'll take you right through it.
We will start with folding it in half. Instead of using a square paper, so you can use a sheet of paper, which is a little thicker and is double as long as mine, or you can use a square paper and fold it in half in the beginning. Now, we will fold a little square, just pinch it here to mark the half. And then diagonally, unfold it. We will repeat that, so we get two crosses. Now, we have two crosses, as you can see. Turn it around and fold it, like so. And on the other side again. Now, comes the difficult part. We pinch here and here, and now we will bring those two points here, here, and there, here and here. So, like this.
All right. So, you know, now, I'm only stopping there, because I think some of you are following along very good, just like, which way we'd have students in class, but some of you are already lost. And we've kind of given up and ready to throw the paper at me as the teacher. So, so, you know, the thoughts about this is, sometimes this is what really happens in our classroom. You know, we get so engulfed into, hey, now, we have a very good lesson today. I've put a lot of time into this. I want you to follow me. Take good notes. And I want you to go home and look at them, and I want you to practice this. Now, if I didn't provide you with this video, and I told you to go home and practice this, how would you be able to do this? But if I flipped this around, and I made the video, and sent this home, said, I want you to practice it, and then come back in, and let's talk about it, everything would be different. You could stop it, rewind it, pause it, go back and play it over and over again, to where you could really grab the concept of what, of what we're trying to put across here. So, you know, when we talk about this, we might have school backwards a little bit. We send the kids home really with the hard stuff. You know, we talk about, you know, whether it's a block schedule or even on a forty-five-minute day. You know, we're talking, our forty-five-minute lecture really turns into about eight to ten minutes of lecture time. By the time that we take out the disruptions from going to the bathroom, even great questions, kids going to the office, in and out, coming in late, that forty-five-minute lecture is really about ten minutes of actual talking of instruction. So what would it be like if we could actually turn all that around? When we look at Bloom's Taxonomy, you know, we have the creating piece at the top, and we work very hard to get down to that meat of remembering. But if we were to flip that and start with creating, it would involve right into remembering, where we're putting that hands-on piece first. And that's, this is a very powerful slide, when we talk, when we get in, I'm gonna show you a video here in just a second of what a flipped classroom looks like. You're gonna see just the change of paradigm. You have to have that paradigm shift to think about approaching that instruction just a little bit differently.
When I first started hearing about flipped classroom model, I thought it was really cool. It sounded like something I wanted to do, because I'm kind of tech savvy, and I wanted to do. But then I started researching online, and I was like, there's not one model. Like, where do I go for like the instructions? And the thing is, is there's not, that it doesn't exist. So what you kind of have to do is feel what your content is and kind of model your own version of what we're gonna show you. So there's not like one correct way to do it.
So we look at what's the best use of your face-to-face time? Is it really giving them the new stuff first, sending them home, then having them come ask questions? Or just giving them a gist of what's gonna happen? Having them go home and really listen and be able to rewind what you're saying, and then come back in and do the hands-on piece in tutorial groups, little PLCs in class, to where the teacher's not just a giver of the information, but they actually can walk around and work with individual and small groups? So we really, now, this is one of the naysayers of this idea. Well, I don't, what if we don't have an iPad? What if, you know, it doesn't have to be an iPad. It could be a DVD player. A teacher could make a DVD of what they're saying. They could actually take a video of themselves. You will see in the video that teachers, that kids are listening to flipped classrooms on iPods, iPads, all, and many, many different devices. So it's really not an iPad thing. It's really not a, any one certain device. It's really just the idea of having a device that they can listen or watch the material on at home. So some other, you know, what happens when there's only one dispenser of knowledge in the classroom? And that's really what happens in the traditional style. And now, not to say, I'm not trying to sell a product here to say, we need to just flip them all around. This is, this is the next big thing. It has its places. You know, there are times when we can't just flip. We might flip a one lesson. It might be a unit, a chapter. It might be something that you do for a week, and then you go back the other way. Because kids, now, they want that variety. They want that change. They, they will get so bored, and they kind of just tune you out when it's the same thing over and over. So that's why I feel that this concept is so good, because Dan and I put this on at our school just very briefly. Since then, we probably had ten to fifteen teachers just attempt it, which is awesome. You know, and they're doing, they come back with other questions, hey, I did it, and it worked. Or I did it, and it stunk. I'm gonna have to, but I'm gonna do it again, because it was not as hard as I thought it would be.
I think that quote at the bottom is really, it's my favorite quote of the slide, just because I was watching another teacher give a keynote about this, and he said, it's something kind of very powerful that I thought. He said, if there's a student that is absent, and then they come in, even if we don't want to, when they come in, we've given this great lesson, and let's say they come in like twenty minutes late to class or something like that, or they weren't there before. If we're asked to explain it again, even though it may be involuntary, we give them that, ah, that exhalation, you know? And even though we don't need to, that, what did that just teach that student that said, I'm never gonna ask you a question ever again, because you just embarrassed me in front of everybody? So if you make yourself rewindingable, where they don't have to do that, it serves them better. That's what I think.
A great example of this is Dan had two students. He was in a three-day lesson, and he had students that kind of came in on day two, new students to our school. He didn't have to, he didn't have to scratch, hey, you just sit tight, we'll be, and I'll catch you up later. He gave them the videos from day one. They were caught up already, their first day into a two-day, two or three-day lesson. That was very powerful. They didn't miss out on anything, which was very, very good, you know, for our new students in the school. They were very comfortable at that point. So this is a video of Adam Sands. He is a, Aaron Sands. He is a science teacher, I believe.
Hi, I'm Aaron Sands, and I teach science here at Willapark High School. My ultimate goal, I guess, as a teacher, is to help students become learners who can learn for themselves, apply themselves. One of the problems that I was guilty of, even prior to flipping my classroom around, was the classroom was centered around me, and I told them exactly what to learn, how to learn it, what assignment to do to learn it, and when to learn it, and how to prove to me that they learned it. I don't do that anymore. Change the place which content is delivered. Instead of standing in front of the class delivering yourself, this type of problem, yourself, this work. I deliver that direct instruction now asynchronously at home. It's maybe as a thing, the campus studio gets to class. They don't show up to learn new stuff. They show up to apply the things that they learned at home, and to ask me questions about the things they learned at home. So now they can have my lesson, if you will, but I'm only gonna stand up and lecture to them in class so that in future, they can get that at home. Then what they were expected to do for homework is now to do in my class. Life is different for me, because I don't, I no longer am the guy who stands up in the front of the classroom and just yacks at the student for how, or however long the class is. Now, I walk around the class, and I help kids. I'm a tutor, a guide, I'm the putter outer of fires, whatever it happens to be. Often, like the crazy chemistry class, I walk around and do that. I don't stand up front and teach the kind of traditional law. I'm Aaron Sands.
So that's a, that was a science. This is a math example. We'll play this a little bit.
Important change. This is supposed to be classwork. This is supposed to be homework. I want you to flip them. Why might I want you to flip them? My name is Crystal Kurtz, and I teach high school math here at Sider Street High School in San Antonio, California. I'll give you on this one. You all right? Excellent. When we're talking about math homework, and kids are going home, and they are just struggling, because they completely forgot. It made sense in class. I got it. That makes sense. And then they go home and completely forget it. They struggle. They get frustrated. They end up not doing it. You know what I'm talking about? After doing a little bit of research online, I came across the idea of the flipped classroom. Wasn't exactly quite sure what I wanted mine to look like when we started, but I decided to start just by doing my lectures at home instead of in class.
Our homework, we do it in class, so we have like people help us with it that knew what they're doing. So like going home and asking my mom, who has no idea what she's doing.
But once we started doing the videos, I was like, okay, I can re-watch these videos. They're there for me. And whenever we had to, I would like go re-watch the videos the day before, and then every day.
The forty-five-minute lesson that I give in class is between an eight and fifteen-minute video. And clock.
So that's an example of what it looks like in a math classroom. So now, we really turn to when we, when we implement this in the school. We have classrooms now that look like this. This is Mr. Koch's room. And he doesn't flip his classroom every day, but, you know, when he does, this is what it looks like. You know, kids, working with kids, and they're figuring things out together, not depending on the teacher for that one sole dispenser of knowledge.
And it's not just take your iPad and just go do anything you want. It is, they, they always have a roadmap. They always know what they're supposed to do. So it's not just a free-for-all. It's kind of the, my biggest hang-up was giving that control over to like, oh, students are gonna be in control of their own learning? I don't know if I'm comfortable with that. But, you know, it, I had to let you a little bit, but it worked out pretty nicely.
So I wanna, I wanna show you this video. That's pretty powerful. We come up with this, and it will make sense of it after we watch, look through it here. So we're gonna, we'll just, we'll look at the slides, because it does look like the videos. So we have Indiana Jones. He's come up to a cliff, and he's looking over, you know, how is he gonna go over? I don't know if you've ever saw this movie, where he, he has to get to the other side, but, and it says that he has to have faith to get across. I mean, there is a path there. He just can't see it. And he's really thinking hard, what am I gonna do to take this first step? So when he takes that step, he actually, you see the look on his face as, oh, my gosh, I did it. And that's what we see in our classrooms, when we have teachers that actually try it. And they were, maybe not a hundred percent successful, but they were somewhat successful, because they had a great idea, and they were, they were letting go of that fear. So as, you know, now he has that look of, okay, I got this now. I'm gonna take another step. And when you change the angle of looking at this path, you can see it from the side. You know, we just look at things from just a little bit differently of what this looks like when we try to cross that path that we're so scared of doing. Because some teachers are just so scared of this. It's not their traditional way. I mean, and really, you know, we talked about some of our best teachers that are veteran teachers that, you know, we're giving them technology. We're putting many, many resources in their hand, but they've been successful already. So, well, you know, why do they need to take this step? Because we can make it so much easier, and just, even if it's just in a little bit of the weather. And then when we, we can mark our path, know exactly where we've been. So to, you know, to really get across the flipped classroom, you know, we say there has to be some things that have to take place to really get to that master point, you know, inquiry, challenge. You know, we would add collaboration in there to a point, the PBL, the project-based learning. You know, we do a lot of that in our schools, especially now, it's so much easier with the iPads, because there's so much more out there that we can access.
And flexibility, really, just offering a whole bunch of different avenues for students to kind of prove what they know to me, instead of saying, do a book report. Student doesn't really care about doing a book report, but if you can prove to me that you know this by doing X, Y, Z, like, okay, well, you've read these three chapters. Can you maybe take an Edmodo quiz on this? Can you give me a one-pager, and then show me X, Y, Z? And I can take that for a grade, and they can, they have freedom of choice. It's, it's a little easier for them to kind of digest, instead of saying, oh, well, I could speak, I'm not doing it, because it's too difficult for them.
Right. And then the thing that really makes all this work is that relationship piece. I mean, that, if you don't have the relationship with your students, to get them to trust what you're doing and really take it home, because what was the first thing that you would probably think of, I said, you know, we just need to start doing this across the district? Well, then you would say, well, what if they don't watch the video? Well, what if they don't listen to your lecture in class? We're right back to square one. But what if they do watch the video? Look how much further we can go with just that one little piece. And I would think that if a kid, especially the kids that don't do their homework, they're probably not doing it because they know, I'm gonna take this home. It's gonna take me an hour. I barely know how to do it, so it's really gonna turn into hour and a half, and I'm gonna sit there and struggle. But what if I said, hey, this is gonna take you eight minutes to go home and watch this video. If you don't understand, that's fine, because you're gonna bring it back in and just be familiar with us. We can talk about it tomorrow, and really get, and dig in with hands-on. Probably, I could probably talk that kid into doing that more so than I can that homework piece that they're not sure of. But what do we do? We say, take it home and practice. But I don't understand. Just practice it and bring it back in. Just show me that you tried it. Well, is that really, was that really the best thing, if they don't really understand what they're doing? So the benefits were, like we talked about earlier, we really want to create that independent learner piece. I just, I like this slide. You know, when you look at it, kids asking for help. And you go, I don't know if I can trust you with all your outdated technology, the chalkboard. I will tell a quick story. I had a teacher that has an iPad. He's a younger teacher, very, very good, excellent math teacher. He's very technology-driven, and his projector went out. And he came to me and said, he said, Mr. Kuhn, my projector's out. I don't know what to do. I said, you're gonna have to write on the board. He goes, I've never written on the board. I don't know what to do. Go down to Miss so-and-so. She probably got some markers in her. You know, it's, it's a paradigm shift of where we're at with, with technology and teachers that use it.
He had a paper grade.
And then we look to just have no gaps in our instruction, no places to hide. Like the students that Mr. Koch had, that came in a day late, you know, from, from just registering to school, no follow of theirs. There was no, they, they didn't have a place to hide. There was no gaps there, because they could pick right up from, from being able to listen or watch the videos.
And just from a status standpoint, I mean, my gradebook doesn't look tremendously different, but having since done this, the kids are, is this gonna solve the homework problem? No. Are there still kids gonna kind of check out? Yes. But my gradebook, the kids that are failing, and I have a couple, they're not failing just by a little bit. They're failing like, I'm talking like twenties, and like fifteen percent, because they're just really not doing anything in class, even though I'm coming over and propping them, things like that. And the kids that are, they're doing, they're doing very, very well. So the divide between passing and failing is much bigger now. So I have a lot more Bs and As.
Yeah, this is an example that one of our teacher uses. It's, you just, and this is how you kind of hold the kids accountable when you send this home, you know? Be fit, be focused, serious attitude, involved in the process, and take away distractions. You know, so that's something about how we would coach the kids up, when we'd say, take this home, look at it. You know, you might understand it, you might not, but that's okay. But just be fit when you're doing it.
And I display this all the time for my students. It's really just for, you know, and I tell them that multitasking is made up. It doesn't exist. You don't know how to do it. It's a made-up term.
And that's it. That's, that's the idea of the flipped classroom. Any questions or comments?
I just want to share before the board members, I, I, I think some of you know I've been very intrigued with the flipped classroom for some time. And my wife, who is a ELA teacher, regularly says, I don't want to hear it anymore. Because she goes, that's fine for science, and that's fine for math. And of course, I'm going, well, Dan Koch is doing it. And so I get a text one day that Mr. Kuhn, in a very good way, was having his annual meeting with my wife, and said.
We were talking about standard three and using the technology piece, you know? And I said, you know, you bear. I said, you know, you're very proficient with the technologies, I look forward to seeing you do even more things. I said, maybe even like flip the classroom one day. She's like, oh, I just, I don't want to hear any more about that. I said, well, tell me a little bit about, you know, what you're at principle of. She goes, well, you know, I also don't know how it works. So I just, you know, we went through pieces of the presentation, you know, not work for it, just different ideas, and she said, you know what, I kind of like it, I'm gonna try it. I'm like, don't tell Thomas that I've been trying to do it. So she goes, no, I'm gonna tell him. So then she immediately went home and said, hey, Mr. Coon had this great idea, I think I'm gonna do it. And sent me the conversation.
But I think that, to me, was an example of what you just shared, is that it is new territory. It's scary to give up that control. And so, as Mr. Koch said, that's definitely the case.
Well, not everything was invented last, yesterday afternoon. And I was in college in nineteen seventy-two. I had a very good college professor, a chemistry professor who actually wrote the textbook, and he said, you should never ever come to class to take notes. He said, you should read the chapter ahead of time and come, only come in with questions. And you know, when I did that, I realized, you do, you know, your mind is open, you're not sitting there frantically trying to figure out what they're saying. And then when we talked about the flipped classroom, I remember, sometimes you don't forget those great, you know, pearls of wisdom you get. But my question is, do you have to be a motivated student to do that, or do you have a pretty high compliance rate?
Your motivated students will probably get through the work faster than the ones that are not. What's good about it is that you can work with the students that are not, and everybody in my classroom is a different spot in the book that we're reading. We're reading The Giver right now, we're almost done with it. And we have Edmodo quizzes every like three to five chapters in there, and the students that are reading ahead, they're kind of going ahead and getting the quizzes done, they have to get a seventy-five percent or higher for me to okay the quiz. But the great really becomes about the conversation that they have with me. Like, they have to bring me all the work, they can't just sit in the back of the classroom and take the quiz and hope that they did well and then go, okay, I'm gonna hide now. They have to come to me, so I always have a station up in front of the room, I say, all right, guys, I'm gonna be up here for signatures, you're gonna come up here. And they give me their sheet, I sign off on the things that they've done, and I'm like, well, how did you get that answer? And if they go, I'm like, you copied off Johnny, didn't you? Oh, yeah, I did. Okay, well, I'm gonna reset the quiz, go back and take it, and you can use the book on it, but make sure that you're, you know, you're following along. And the quizzes will timeout after like twenty-five minutes, you can set those things on Edmodo. But the kids that are motivated to learn yet, they're definitely gonna go, they're gonna soar past it. And I have kids that are done with the unit now, they're doing some extra credit work, they're on to our next thing. But the kids that are struggling, it gives me more time to kind of work with them and say, well, why are you struggling? And a lot of the time, it's just, you know, they're hung up on a concept, or the kids that just don't, oh, I don't do homework, well, now here's the class time to do it.
And what we're seeing school-wide is that there's kids that are not as motivated to do their work, they're actually trying a little bit more because it's different and it's not new to them. They actually get a kick out of being, out of knowing more about the technology than the teacher. You know, we've had many, we've had a couple teachers that said, you know, I was the master of technology the first day we had the device, after that, I was not.
I agree, we've seen some of the lessons that y'all, some of the work products that the kids have gotten related to a book before that has animation and all kinds of stuff, it's really incredible.
And even some of our most unmotivated students will develop those because it's different to them, not in just the traditional way, where they've somewhere along the way been burned out on or just turned off of. You know, we can give them the flexibility of learning or showing mastery a different way, which, you know, which turns them on to the assignment a little bit better.
And Mr. Koch is an avid teacher, too, and I encourage that because again, you know, this board's been very encouraging of the avid, but you've been trying, and Mr. Coon, you've been both a supporter and driver of that, you're changing Avid. And next year, you're even looking to really radically change it.
We're gonna really take a step out and try to just do away with our three-ring notebook. And we're gonna pilot either a number of classes or just the whole grade level, but we have found a number of apps that we're gonna try to, that will hopefully take the place of that three-ring notebook and see how that works. I mean, you know, Avid has not jumped to the chase to invent that because really, you know, Avid is so global, we're not, you know, we are one of those schools that are far advanced than some of the other schools globally, so Avid's not gonna jump on that on our behalf because we're there. I would say as more schools get to where we're at, then I think Avid would then say, hey, we need to develop some kind of digital app for that notebook. But for now, I think they're just kind of relying on us doing it ourselves, which I would rather it be that way so we could really pick the one that's best for us rather than the one that Avid says, do it because this is what, it's ours and you have to use it that way.
It's very interesting to me because in teaching, starting in teaching, I never ever was a traditional teacher, I never was at a traditional school, it's always been experimental school, where you, Summerfield, look that up, that type of thing. And I visited your classroom, and I've always said, I always want to go back to the beginning, back to the future, and when I was in your classroom, that was the type of learning that I first saw as a teacher. In my mind, the word seamless came up. This is a seamless classroom, everyone is doing what they're supposed to be doing. I can't find any double-barred junctures, there's no any periods, I couldn't find, they were off, it was flowing, everything was flowing, and I was very...
That's the idea, I'm glad you read it like that.
I think that's one of the various, one of the most unique things about our school was the support that we get from Dr. Gettys and TRC, and then just our staff being innovators of not being afraid to try it. You know, we haven't had anybody come to us and say, I just can't do this, you know, this is, I'm not on board with this. I mean, everyone has given it some type of chance, and we have advanced users like Mr. Koch, and we have everyone else that is on a timeline that we have strategically put out to where they are following along. But this flipped classroom is something that we may even put on like a third-year implementation plan to take it even to the next level, to keep challenging the teachers to keep doing more and more with the technology.
Also, Mr. Koch recently shared with me a textbook, small one, textbook, an interactive textbook that he built using the, is it iBooks Creator?
iBooks Author.
iBooks Author. It was, it's amazing, you know, interactive pictures, it's a moving book. So it's engaging. I think one thing, too, that, because we hear how innovative we are, and I'm glad of that, but the question, of course, is, well, why are we blazing those trails at times? If you look at our legislation and Mr. Clodder, and Dr. Gettys and I have been continually monitoring the new textbook legislation, SB eight sixty-four and HB nine twenty-one, both of which right now are going to be going to the floor. They move up the implementation of the digital by a year, from what it is. So while we sometimes think we're at the cutting edge, and I am thrilled that Central Springs and this district and our middle schools have been doing this, Crystal River, you know, they're approaching this, Crystal River Middle, I've seen that there, I've seen Inverness Middle, it's exciting, it's a necessity of where we're going. And I think you talked about that of the engagement piece in the classroom and keeping that motivation, so. Board members, do you have any other questions before we let the gentleman?
I'm like, show off our chairman's card. I like his voice.
Thank you. Keep it up. Oh, and congratulations, when is the wedding?
Twenty-fifth.
And Mr. Koch is one of those success stories where his wife and he actually are both teachers in our district, and Dr. Connors has the pleasure of having his wife as one of his, her science teachers that isn't going anywhere.
And please don't let your kids keep scoring so high in the FCAT, it really causes a lot of trouble. How long did we not have our scores in mystery land? Because they scored too high?
Yeah, the math. Yeah. It was so good that it was statistically impossible.
I had your investigation.
Yeah.
Maybe they decreased triple that or something.
That's okay.
Yeah, and decrease all you want. What do you mean they learned? Mr. Clodder, thank you, you continue, I think we're gonna move on to Ms. Deutschman, and I'm gonna go ahead and, Ms. Deutschman, I'm gonna turn it over to you because I think you wanted to start this, so.
Okay, so it started off as a simple conversation. I was a member of the high school people progression plan meeting, meeting, and we broke up into smaller groups to talk about particular things, and I was on the curriculum and instruction, small, busy, with Dr. Connors and Laura Aguilara and Sean Newman, all three that I highly respect as far as understanding the needs of high school, high school students. And so the very first part of the curriculum instructional, part of the people progression plan was the attendance policy, and all three of them said pretty much at the same time, boy, that needs to be changed. So we talked about a little bit why that needs to be changed, and I said, well, as a board member, I would be happy to bring that to the board to see if there was some interest in having a further discussion about it, which immediately set Mr. Clodder's hair on fire.
Just have a little red tinge to it.
And so I decided that, well, you know, asked you all if you wanted to pursue it, but let me give you a little bit of my perspective about why this is important. I was on the board when this policy was adopted, Ms. Hemel was on the policy, I'm a board. The back history, because people all tell me who are in positions of authority here say, well, I don't know, I don't know how we got this idea, because it predates an awful lot of folks that are here today. I'm not sure what year it was, I'm thinking probably somewhere around the nineteen ninety-somethings, eighty, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand, something like that.
He says ninety-eight.
He says ninety-eight, okay. There was legislation that said if a student misses more than twenty days, that we will start to have our FTE reduced. And so the first, I guess preemptive strike was to have very strong attendance policy that would encourage students to come to school and so that we wouldn't lose funding. Since then, that's been taken off the books a long time ago. The attendance policy that was proposed to us did not have the exception, the excessive absence clause, that was something that I introduced because we're making no distinction at the time between excused and unexcused absence. So it was gonna put an awful burden on the schools to follow up like every single absence for every single student, keep track of it. So we said, if we're going to excuse students anyway, go to the doctor and have the doctor's report or whatever, you know, documentation are required for the list of the excuses, why count those? So we made that clause that those wouldn't count towards the number of absences. And then over the years, we have requested workshops in that we study the data, what was the impact? So the first couple of years, I would say that the attendance increased dramatically, and then after that, I would say by about year four or five, probably reached the nineteen ninety-eight level, you know, it stopped having a real effect. And the other impact was, and most of you were here at the time when we had the workshop and talked about, the appeals process, and we were fending to, at least my ways, but I'm sure yours as well, that every high school was having between three and four hundred appeals every term that they had to go back in and look at and decide whether or not they would approve the appeal or not. So again, huge burden of work, huge amount of work, and so we tried to discourage that because it was just causing an awful lot of work for people, and if you're going to be approving all these appeals, why make people go through all of this? So now we're at the point, and we can certainly ask our principals, and I'm not sure if it's the same at every school, but it is now used to determine, the attendance is used to determine whether or not a student will receive credit for the class based on whether or not they pass a final exam. So if you've had the excessive absences, you failed the final exam, you failed the course. If you had excessive absences and you passed the course and you passed the final exam, you got credit, is that the way it's being done right now? Does that sound right? Okay. The other wrinkle in the ointment, the thing that has always bothered me, absences resulting from out-of-school suspension are unexcused, but they don't count against a student for the grade, and they're also allowed to receive credit for the course and make up the work. So if we're throwing kids out of school for misbehaving, we're treating them much more generously than a student who was sick and his mom didn't have the ability or money to take him to the doctor. So then the question came up, well, what are other districts doing? So I looked at, I looked as many as I could, there isn't a single district surrounding our area, including the very large ones, that even mentions the connection between academic grades and attendance. It doesn't exist. One policy said that it would be up to the teacher to deduct ten percent of the grade for unexcused absences for the makeup work. But for most of them, it said, if the student has completed all the coursework and has demonstrated mastery of the requirement, the full course may be awarded per Florida statute one zero zero three point four three six, and that's the statute that tells you how many hours you have to have in order to get credit. And then also in there, it says excused absences cannot be counted against students and they can make work up. That was pretty consistent in as many student policies as I could find. So the question is, and part of the problem that Mr. Clodder was responding to wasn't any of the questions about the attendance policy, but because we already have approved the existing code of conduct and the changes that we've made to it, and have it on the books for public hearing May thirteenth or something, and if we wanted to go back and revise this, we would have to reschedule that public hearing, and it's gotta be Mr. Bradshaw's correct, thirty days from the day that we approve it for public advertising, plenty of days, so.
Like baggy plaid pants, could we not also do it as an amendment?
We could.
Or an addendum?
Yeah, there's a lot of things that we can do. I think the first thing that we really need to talk about, though, is the substance of this policy. Is this a policy that we believe is a good and effective policy that we want to continue, or do we want to ask for some input from our principals and from our school leaders to deal with this on a daily basis and ask them, do they think it's an effective policy? Is it a policy that has seen its day and needs to change?
Well, I think we do need to hear from the principals and find out what they're...
And also, there's also another issue to take into account when we look at this, too. We are now facing Algebra One and a course exam that does not require a student to show up for a single class, and they can get credit as they can for, I think, AP, if you take the AP exam, you can take the class. So we're already starting to see in the testing world, the requirement for class time, seat time, as Jeb Bush likes to call it, isn't even required. So, you know, again, how do we look at that as far as an attendance policy goes? If the state doesn't require a student to attend a class, and we're saying, we're not even gonna give them credit if he doesn't show up, what's the prevailing...
And there's, and it's not just Algebra One, it's, there's, I believe we've referred to, Mr. Clodder's capping now instead of cleping?
Yeah.
There's a number of courses that can be...
The credit acceleration process.
Right. So it's, and that's now in statute, so. I think that, with no objection from the rest of the board members, I'd like to, Ms. Hemel, if you want to bring the principals forward and get some thoughts from them, and, you know, I don't know if there's, I don't know if they're looking for a spokesperson. Why do I see the gentleman going, you go? I can understand, she makes you gentlemen look good.
Could you guys have a copy? Anyway, what we're referring to is on page eight.
And Dr. Connor, thank you for being here, Mr. Davis, thank you for being here, and thank you so much for coming. It really is always helpful for us to hear from you all because we are interested. You all are what drives so much of what our needs are, and...
Well, I really wasn't planning on being the spokesperson, so I think what we have are really two different...
Excuse me, can we get a page, you have a page number? Page eight, thank you.
We have two different issues, and we've discussed this quite a bit. It's really about, can the students demonstrate mastery of the content? So we all agree if they can, they get the credit. And we all agree that that doesn't really connect to attendance, that's our attendance policy. If they pass the final exam, then it gets averaged in and they get the credit. I think the real question comes from what happens when they fail that final exam? When they cannot demonstrate mastery on that exam? For me personally, I have a real problem with that one-day, one-test, high-stakes mentality. That's where I'm struggling. So it's really up to you, how do we apply this attendance policy? Because I can make it really simple, let's say everything is equal except this one student Let's say everything is equal except this one student has six days out and, you know, or they all do. So the one student passes the final exam, gets the grade, gets the credit. The other student, for some reason, on that particular day, does not pass that final exam. They do not get credit. And so that has implications for us in creating a master schedule and bringing the students back in and retaking. And then, you know, maybe they really do know the content, so now they're sitting in the class. And we're talking about hundreds of students that this impacts.
And that was, I guess, the question is, you know, do we have an idea of what the number of students at each school potentially?
And if a student doesn't, student hasn't missed any classes all semester but fails the final exam, what happens then?
They just gets averaged 20% of their grade and they earn whatever.
So the attendance issue is really making a determination for two students who have missed class, but by all other measures have done exactly what the other students in the class have done, either passing or failing, but they just did, were absent.
Right.
So that absence is determining their grade, not their effort.
Correct. It has greater impact because it is a competency test. They have to pass the final exam if they have those absences. And we have students who do not pass the final exam, which is a whole nother topic as to why they do not pass. I think for me, this automatic no-credit failure policy, that's what I struggle with because I want to know more details. I want to know why did they fail the exam? What does the exam scores look like for all of the students in the class? Not necessarily the ones that have, you know, absences. Because we're really not fixing the attendance issue with our current policy because we could have a student who's out 20 days, 25 days, 30 days, but they pass the final exam. They earn credit and get to move on. And then we have this one student who maybe is out six days. They're really coming to school more regularly, but for whatever reason, they didn't pass that final exam. And it is an automatic policy that they don't earn credit and we have to do...
So that student that comes for the six days and, I'm sorry, they missed, I'm sorry, they missed for the six days, they do not pass the final, therefore they do not pass the course.
That's correct.
As opposed to if I had come five days, I mean, I only missed five days and I failed the final, I would get credit?
Well, five days, actually, you wouldn't either, but...
Okay. How many days would I, in essence?
You could miss four.
Four. I could miss four. So if I missed four days and I failed it, I've passed the course.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Averaged in as 20% of the...
Because now it's only, it's only 20% of the...
So you could miss 20 days and come take the final and now you pass. If you pass, now you pass the course.
You're right. They were unrelated.
Right.
I think this was an attempt at the time, based on that FTE thing, but that, I don't think that was an effect more than a year because, again, it was a stupid idea. If a kid stops coming to school in the middle of the winter, why are the teacher? You know, it was a funding issue, it wasn't an attendance issue. Funding issue one way and like a lot of things, we just stuck with what we had because that becomes a fear tactic. Oh my God, what happens if you take this away? Kids will just stop coming to school because they won't have to. And I don't believe that for a minute, just like you talked about, you know, the fear and technology, the kids would misuse a device. Well, not if you set it up properly and there's an expectation that they won't. And there's other provisions in here, driver's license, we talked about even extracurricular activities.
Correct.
And there's state laws about truancy and attendance. So I think, you know, the fact that we layer on this extra penalty has caused a lot of trouble in our schools.
Well, and it's so, it's so challenging to try to weed through as far as labeling the kids that fall in between the cracks. And I definitely appreciate the fact that this has been brought to the surface because it's been a frustration from the front line for many, many years. I would like to take some steps to allow dialogue to take place at the school sites and pull teachers and attendance personnel into...
Well, Ms. Balfour, that, we wouldn't have that time.
I see this as such...
I mean, really, the truth is, is the administrators are the ones...
It's a bottom line, we're going to put a Band-Aid on it, but this is an issue that needs to be really fixed. She's bringing up an excellent point. We've never really had anything that matched, so...
And I don't want it to appear that I don't think, you know, I think students should come to school every single day. It's very important, you know, and it isn't about that. Because we are already saying that we just, we all believe now that if they can demonstrate mastery, then they should earn the credit. It's when on this one day, one test, for some reason that they do not have a passing score, then it's everything they've done the whole term that is disregarded and they are, and they don't earn the credit and they have the failing grade.
I was, one of the reasons that was put in, I know some administrators believe that having attendance, more attendance, not missing so many days of school would be beneficial if it was a policy that said you cannot miss those and if you do miss those, then you're going to fail a course. So it was used as to keep the kids in school, to make them not miss school. And I remember having this conversation over and over and over again because I always wanted the kids to clap out of the classes. I didn't see why they waste their time with algebra.
I think we just talked to a student about that today. Get your credit and you don't have to show up again. Oh, what about the absentee policy? So let me ask you this, Lynn, not putting your other two colleagues on the spot, but do you think this is sort of a uniform belief in your other two high schools?
My thought, it doesn't matter what we do, Ms. Deutschman, all three of us, I'm sure, and every principal in this district, we're going to go the extra mile to help that student. It doesn't matter if we have three days, five days, 20 days.
But would you like to see this a policy, this particular, just this one paragraph deleted from the code of conduct so that it's not anything that you are forced to do? Look at you, Mr. Davis.
I know you are.
Mr. Elker, you dealt with this from both ends of the...
Right. I was in student services when all this kind of...
Thank you, Dr. Clard.
I do think we really need to take a hard look at it and see what can come out of that. I think I would like to have some time, especially being a, I want to call myself a rookie principal, but in the way of, like with high schools, looking at the effect of that. I did bring this up at a staff meeting, just asking for some input last Wednesday and Ms. Joseph, I think was at that meeting too. And I did get a couple of responses from it. One of them is, are we grading for attendance or are we grading for what the actual content is? So that was just one of the comments we got. I just am not as comfortable as trying to do something right now for this upcoming school year without really taking a look at going over some...
And then that suggestion that we do, but what I'm looking for is some consensus from you all that it's an important issue that needs to be looked at and so that you can come back with recommendations to us in a very short amount of time so that if we want to go ahead and make that change to the code of conduct, we can do it and re-advertise it so that we will not delay the printing of the code of conduct. Because at one point, Ms. Allegra was telling me, we went, then we would delay until October. So we certainly don't want to see that happen.
If we come back by the April 20th, that's what we're going to figure out, the April 22nd meeting, we can get it back, give it to Pride and get it back by the first day of...
Not October.
Not October. And I just want to, when we met the principals and then when I met with my three students who advised everyone, if they felt like the attendance policy and the exam policy made them come to school, I went and said yes. And they felt like the kids who don't pass their finals, then, you know, they probably don't care anywhere.
Ms. Allegra, are you the one that keeps the data on the attendance? Is it Student Services that tracks that or is that just the individual schools? Or you just do the kids that are over 20 days?
We do the compilation of the data for the students that have had to pass the final in order to pass the class.
Okay. So where would we actually be able to get cumulative data on attendance to see, I mean, you know, do we know what, do we know that attendance is an issue these days?
What I can share with you is we collect two pieces of data from Student Services. Every nine weeks, we get information from the schools of how many students have not been successful on their final comprehension and then did not pass the course, what, five more absences? And then on a weekly basis, for probably the last six or seven years, we get a compilation of data every Monday morning that tells us at every school, the percentage of kids that are out.
Okay.
When we see a spike in that, we put out a surveillance report through the health, through the clinic to find out why we have seen a raise. Because the health department wants to know if there's an issue out there, are we seeing any increase in flu. What I can share with you, if you would allow me to, just to give the board this piece of information, just district-wide, I just wanted to share with you that in the last seven years, you can see the trend district-wide for our attendance. And already this year, in 1314, as of March, we're at a 3.8.
This is though K through 12?
This is K through 12, district-wide, yes.
So, oh, 3.8 days, ma'am?
Absentee rate, right.
And 206, 207 was up at 6?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, boy, okay.
We average between 3 and 5%, depending on the time of the year, with the exception of Renaissance and Crest, sometimes they're between 6, 7, maybe as high as 8% daily absentee. But like Virginia said, we monitor that every week. Typically, it's seasonal. You can imagine with the flus and those kind of things.
Or Christmas.
Yeah, we haven't seen an increase in it in the last few years.
Does it change based on grade, you know, elementary to middle to high school or is it fairly consistent?
It's fairly consistent. It depends on the numbers.
Okay.
So if you were looking at year to year, you have to think about enrollment has changed over the last couple of years. But like Mr. Mullen said, he gets a copy of it every week. I see it compiled, we get out information, a form is filled out through a survey monkey on why we see an increase, or how many clinic visits have you had? We see a lot. What has been the cause? Is it a runny nose? Is it a fever? Is it diarrhea or is it vomiting? And then we then take that information and give it to the health department and they give us direction. But we've been really fortunate, the last several years, we haven't had those high spikes since the H1N...
At what point, how many days does a student have to be absent before they're dropped from the roll? Is there a magic number?
Oh, it's not a one, three-word answer. It's a little bit detailed, so it's based on...
It's more of a process that we want the principals to go through, including up to a home visit if we can, we can find...
Oh, that's mandatory.
Is it like a child study team?
The school board under, with Ms. Hemel's direction, gosh, about six or seven years ago, we started a process and we had that process, which was presented to you all as a flow chart. We, the board agrees, Ms. Hemel agrees, we don't want to make it easy for students to drop out. So instead of a student at one time in another district just being able to come in with their parent and withdraw, there's several steps they have to go through. And like Mr. Mullen said, if a student isn't showing up for a while, then there's many avenues we take. It's not a one shot, let's dismiss them as an attendee. We do many, many steps and those steps are balanced and checked through Ms. Humboldt to make sure we're doing that. On a monthly basis, I'm sorry, on a monthly basis, we get a dropout report and we meet with the attendance assistants, with representatives from their school who they've met with, an administrator, to talk about, you know, where has Mike been? Where's he been for 15 days? Have we done A, B, C, D? Have we checked where the parent works? Have we checked grandma? Checked a relative? Can we look back when he was in middle school who was on his emergency card? Maybe they know where he is or how we can find him. So we don't just dismiss the students.
And that number was A.
I think that when, Charles has been asked many times, if you send somebody out after the third absent, I think you're going to make a lot of headway, then waiting to the 10th absent. What do you do now, the fifth absent? Is that the one that rings the bell? What we do is about the third absence, it's the responsibility of that teacher to let the principal know or the AP who's overseeing attendance. They then get in touch at times with the attendance assistants. Sometimes the attendance assistants will run that report themselves. They make a phone call. Sometimes it's teacher-generated. Sometimes the attendance assistant is not involved till it gets to the fifth absent. By statute, by the fifth absent, we have to convene a child study team meeting and have a meeting with the parent, the teacher, school representation, find out the reason for the absence, see what we can do to help that parent. Could be several different reasons why they're absent, what interventions could be put in place. Once they hit that three or five level, definitely the five, that child is monitored henceforth. That is a big difference. If interventions are begun at the third absence, then you really have a much better payoff than even the fifth. And I'll share with you collectively, that's really been the focus at the three high schools the last couple of years because they don't want to wait till the fifth. Because... So are the attendance assistants going out after the third absent? Most of the time, it's a phone call unless it's a student that they've worked with before and they always check with administration, what steps do you want to take? Sometimes administration might know a reason why that student isn't there. How do they know they're not talking to a student?
Good question.
And how many times they answer that? Honey, I'm just saying, because I think this paraphrase is a good point, that some of these kids and parents may not know the kids aren't coming. So maybe, we'll talk about that.
So Ms. Allegra, can you live with this time? We walked backwards to count, do you live with this time?
Yes, so when you and I had a conversation, I wasn't as versed as you were with the steps. I thought we had to go through a workshop again, same procedures we took back in March. So I was unaware of that. My working with Pride is a six to eight week timeline. They can, they can slow down the process anytime they want, but if we are looking for that new timeline that Ms. Hemel suggested, it'd be close, but I think we could work with it.
We don't need to slow up the print. We've had policy books produced and then we've had the amend, the addendum. It's been added.
That's a precedent that we can change.
It is.
So if you can get that in time.
It'd be nice.
If, if you may change.
So my understanding is if that change was made at the April 22nd, we would then publicize it in a public hearing and we have to have that the end of May.
Yeah, we usually have a meeting, but we can always have one.
We can always have one. And then that would give us, really, actually, if we did that, we'd only be two weeks out. June 16th is our six and a half.
Is there something you want us to bring back to the April 8th meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to get back, we need to get back feedback or... Feedback from recommendations, any specific recommendations, keep it or get rid of it? Really just yes or no? Because it's just eliminating one clause in here. Get rid of it or keep it?
Well, are we wanting them just to focus on that one clause or will they truly take a deep look at the attendance policy as it stands?
The attendance policy, other just says whether it's excused or unexcused. We've already had that conversation. We've made those changes last year, even as far as what kind of note was required.
Yeah, the significant difference is whether they're going to get credit or not get credit.
Right.
We can look at our processes as far as whether we go out at three absences or four absences. A lot of that's going to be driven by the staff that we have.
It's item five, high school attendance requirements for force credit, A, one and two, that's it. That's really all that we, except, but...
Well, the exceptions, I think, are part of that, that still piece.
High school principals will solicit information from their staffs that we will meet with the high school principals and come back with a recommendation to the board at April 3rd.
And what we'll do, board members, is then we'll have a workshop and special meeting so that if we, if we need to take action on that, then we can do that. Well, we will have to take action one way or the other on that.
Well, we can also bring it to the April 22nd if we're ready to go.
Okay.
That's okay. We can just recess, the special meeting and do it back then.
This is...
Are we, are we good?
Yeah. Thank you for coming. And I'm sorry that we reached out this early.
We've had a close meeting.
Somebody had to get me out of my...
I want to take a deep breath and really dissect it.
Uh, no, we're going to have to do that. Well, and just as a discussion, we're going to have to change our workshop to probably 10:30 because we want to make sure to accommodate your meeting of your value adjustment. And, because they can't have their meeting, of course, as we know, without Sandy there. So we'll have that and then what we're looking at is as a 10:30 workshop beginning. And if we need to adjust for that, we'll, you know, play a game or something until you get here. So...
So we're going to do 10:30 of the...
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that. Okay. Then with that, we are moving on to attorney's legal matters.
Yeah, I do have one thing.
I'm sorry? Oh, approval of the minutes. Motion.
Oh, approval of the minutes.
I have a motion by Ms., I'm sorry, by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Balfour to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
I do have something. I know that it was brought up recently about the, what is with the .25 final money? I think it's down to 1.25 now or .2. Like, still at the .25?
There's some timeframes involved in that and so I just wanted to try to get some direction. You may not have made up your mind on what you want to do, but you know, they go through that process of doing the amendments and resolutions and getting it approved and giving it to the county commission and having them approve it and giving it to.
We're there.
We're getting there, yes. So I think Ms. Gill told me the last date that I could have it to her was like August 28th, but by the time you start dragging the salad, it goes, it goes by.
It goes in the general ballot in November?
In November. So I bring this up because it's not a small undertaking and so I would prefer not to have that last minute hang. I think we want to do this to get it done.
I mean, as of this, can we go ahead and start the process, the ball rolling? And then after budget updates, present the picture clearly? If we decide as a board to retract that, is that legal?
Well, nothing's going to, I mean, it's going to have to come in front of you for approval when they go to the county commission. And they don't actually approve whether you can do it or not. It's a pass through to the county commission. They're the one that says, put it on the ballot. So really, it's just getting all the paperwork to you.
Just give the ball rolling as a just in case.
So how much would it cost? Are we charged with that?
Are you charged with what?
Putting something on the ballot.
I don't believe you're charged, you know, you're not charged with that. If you have, if you tell the special election to do it, then you would be charged for it. But in the general election, you're not.
We've put it on the ballot, they will not charge us.
Right.
Okay.
So I just bring that up as a friendly reminder for my own benefit, for the most part. So that if it's something which I would like to consider and talk about and make your minds up.
You know, I, as far as the board, you know, each person, I think, can chime in. I still maintain of where I'm at, that I'm, I have reservations about moving forward with it myself.
I agree. I think the last time we still talked to Sandy.
My, my concern is, is that we have, as Ms. Bryant brought up, we have some things that we need to look at on a long-term basis. I have trouble until we've explored more of those things that the public is going to accept that .25 or whatever that may be, until we've explored those.
I disagree with you, Mr. Kennedy.
That's all good.
Because we're looking at $25 or $30 per person. And I don't know a person in this county who wouldn't do that for our schools.
65% last election.
That, that was, that was the fault of the way it was presented. It was after all those no, 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 no.
I know.
And people didn't read it.
I know. And I, and I know that's been the theory. I'm just not sure that, that when I hear the, the rest of the, the public out there, they pretty much don't want any tax.
If it's presented clearly to help our schools, I believe we can get it passed.
Well, and I'm not trying to, to move to present to the public that this is, this is something we as a board want. We're just looking at right now and making a determination if we should at least pursue it to get the paperwork processed timely so that we can have the option to either put it on the ballot or not. So if I understand where we are right now in the process, that's what you're asking? If you want, if we want you to start the ball rolling in that direction so that as a board, we can make the decision once we get a clearer picture of what the budget really looks like?
Yeah, and August 8th is the drop dead date for the supervisor elections. And then it's still going to have to go to the county commission before, before that. So that would need to go sometime in July. So, you know.
And then we can, when's the last opportunity to pull that off in the ballot? Would be August 8th.
No, they put it to ballots way ahead.
Right, that's why you have to have it there by August 8th so that they can, they can get it put on the ballot and everything else.
Okay. So if we make that determination now not to do it, then we, we will have no choice. So then what, I'm seeing this as an opportunity to give choice.
Well, I mean, I guess, I mean, if you want me to prepare paperwork for something you might not do, I'd be more than happy to start preparing the paperwork to have, to have all of that done.
Well, we've got a budget that needs to be clarified.
I think the question Sandy's looking for is we would have to approve that at the June board meeting to get it to the commissioners in the July meeting so they can give it to Susan by August. So June is probably our drop dead day, yay or nay? The paperwork can be presented at the June board meeting and you want to yay or nay at that time. So that's probably the time.
Well, I would prefer you not to tell me at the June board meeting to start the paperwork. I think it's probably, right, it needs to be approved sometime.
And Ms. Bryant, the answer to the question is yes, it costs us money because he's not charged us. That's what I was trying to think. Thank you, Ms. Deuchman.
And I think what Mr. Kennedy said.
So don't, don't have them do it as an exercise in futility.
Exactly.
Mr. Kennedy's trying to point out that we're looking at the budget. We've asked input from the staff about the budget and we should be clear in our minds before we present to somebody as if we worked here.
I think if we give direction right now, I think you're going to find that with all due respect, the headline potentially tomorrow's paper is school board gives direction to put on the, the ballot. And I think then we're going to have to be in a position to be able to defend that and explain that. And I don't think we're in a position to do that.
We need to look at our budget as we're doing it right now and try to see what we can do and we'll understand in the public.
Because I think the question they're going to say is, well, how do you know you need it? Well, I know we know we need it. We're going to always feel that we need it. And I, and I knew that, but I think we, unfortunately, that's not going to probably be enough to convince. And, and, and Ms. Bryant, I agree with you. To me, tomorrow, hey, I'll pay, and I would pay twice, three times that to have that happen.
That would be good.
And I would give, I would do, exactly. I was going to say, I would do a .75 with no problem. But unfortunately, that's not for me to make that full decision.
How about being given by the discretion to add by super majority, the .25?
And right now, I do not see, and Mr. Walker, I don't think that you've seen it either. I have not seen that that's working its way through and I've been tracking a lot of that.
Do they have something proposed that just didn't come out of the committee or?
They did.
They did, it's not. And at this point, if it's not well making its way out, it's not going to.
Probably ones that are experiencing declining enrollment. When you have declining enrollment, you have a declining need for capital outlay money because you don't need to build new schools. That's the other flow of the economy in Florida. So that you have more money in the operational end, which is where, you know, we've been short the last, what, five years? But it's coming back. Just talk to the governor, he'll tell you.
And the challenge in Citrus County is it's never been overly consistent. And, and you, you all have had a challenge over the last decades in, in trying to predict that and plan for that. It's not been easy. So is there any direction that we're going to give? I know Ms. Bryant, I think, has made a thing, I think Ms. Balfour wants to still keep things open.
Open opportunity, not knowing exactly where we are on, on the budget. We do know that we will be able to plan, but we also know that we've got a shortfall based on the fact that the settlement obviously was less than anybody hoped for. So with all that said, I hate to box this into a corner, where we're going to not have flexibility of choice. So I, I'm leaning with Ms. Bryant when it comes to allowing him an opportunity to forward with it so that we do have choice. Again, when we get a clear understanding of where we are with, with budget, then we can pull it off with that ballot.
And, and Mr. Walker, when do you think we're going to have more of that clear?
I'll certainly present to you in two weeks.
Okay. And I, and I think in that point, we still, Ms. Balfour, have time then. So, so we don't have to feel like, and I think that's your concern. We still don't, we do not, if we don't decide tonight, we are not, it's not, you know, we still have time.
Eliminate an opportunity to service our students properly. So with that said, Mr. Bradshaw gave me the indication that we needed to make a decision tonight, looking at a two-week window. Are you okay with that as far as the process?
I just want, I want to make sure that I have plenty of time to do it.
Right.
In so, so that.
To do it, right, sure.
I would prefer to have, if you do it at the main, then I got to junior, they all done and stuff because it's not just me drafting and I go and talk to them. It's like the two fragile elections, make sure it's formatted right and you're able to balance as much of other little nuances. So I give it to the coordinator of the board and county commission. So I just prefer a little extra time.
And then the last moment, if we, as a board, choose to retract it from the ballot, that would be August 8th?
Well, you, you would just not approve the resolution.
Okay. So I don't see a reason why we wouldn't want the option. You know, I guess hell comes near, but what are you going to charge us?
Yeah, well, right now, I don't think we've still had a majority that's, that's leaning in that direction.
Well, it's not up for vote right now anyway.
No, it isn't, but you need to be, you need to be prepared to make a decision.
Oh, yeah.
And you can't just wait and see what happens and then make a decision in the last minute. Because here's the reality.
Well, I need information, information to make a decision.
Well, we've had plenty of information.
I'm hearing that in two weeks, I'm going to get a clearer understanding of the budget and it's what I'm anxious for so I can make clear, educated decisions.
You just asked him though to be, that maybe we could do everything and pull it off in August.
I need to know what, what my options are and what the flexibility is if the board offers.
And you should come here, prepare to make a decision one way or the other in two weeks, right? Because otherwise, you're going to incur costs by your attorney, who's going to spend a lot of time wasting time only to see, I know it's what you do for a living, but I'm like paying for stuff we actually use.
Don't pretend you care for the wasting time.
You'll be wasting time if they, if they decide at the very last minute to not put on the ballot.
It'd be billable hours that we don't, we don't get.
But if we want it.
That is true.
Well, again, I would like to request that you don't take any action until, which you can't anyway, for a couple of weeks until.
We, and, and we haven't given them direction.
I'll be wrong enough as a reminder so that I don't get, you know, all of a sudden, hey, we want this done.
You just want us to get in the stir and it more. We're stirred up.
We're in good shape. Thank you.
And I'll reiterate my position, whatever it's worth, even though I have no dog in this fight now, is that we happen to be in a little unique situation in Florida because we have been a district that has been impacted just locally by Duke and not by the overall economy of the state or the overall legislative budget. And so people don't just read the Citrus County Carolina vote. And people just don't think of Citrus County as its own little unique bubble and, and look at it differently than the rest of the state. The prevailing, the prevailing mood in the state is that the economy is, is improving, that everybody's getting more money, especially schools. And so how do you then go out and tell your taxpayers, oh, except for us, and except for the last couple of years, and that's why we should raise your sales tax locally because of an incident that happened that is now over?
And add alarm, it's not even sales tax, it's an add alarm. So it's just the property owners that will be affected.
So in the last, well, we passed it the first time, it was a much easier sell because I think all schools were suffering. We had some real identified capital needs and now we have schools that have empty classrooms. So, you know, the situation's really changed, it's really turned a lot in the last couple of years. And I think as far as selling that to the public, especially when there's four seats up for election, is going to be something that maybe is going to be very difficult.
And I.
I said before, you don't want to lose more than once. If you ever lost one election in your life, I don't think everyone will lose a second one. And we've already lost that last election.
And it concerns them.
Because then you're done.
And, and that's where I think that we are going to have to go to the public for .25 sometime in the future.
Why?
If, if, if things do not improve, I apologize. If things do not improve, we would, we may not have any other choice. But today, I do not believe, that it concerns me that the public is going to have a challenge embracing that, in particular, when I think we still have some outlining changes that are going to need to be made. And I, I, there is definitely an investment on return and where we have a community that the majority of the taxpayers are not users of the system. It is difficult when it is only, I think it's $25 roughly, typically, I think, is roughly where it comes out to be annually.
Per hundred thousand.
Per hundred thousand. Boy, it is a small amount. And I, I think we echoed that in the last election over and over. And while it still was placed wrong, we had the endorsement of the Chronicle, we've had positive things, it failed by 60%. And I just don't know that we want to do that again. So.
That's why you probably go to the class slots on the, on the ballot again either for a very long time.
Right. With that, if there's no other, then I think we go down to board reports. Mr. Mellon, do you have anything for us?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
I did go to Crystal River High School for the key impressed triathlon. They had running going on. I don't know, it was exciting. I go every year. And it's sponsored by Columbus, of course. And they're just precious children and they love getting their little medals around their necks. It's a good day.
Great pictures, if you look on Facebook, that you'll be able to see. Not you, but, but the public.
Does anybody have any more questions for me?
Are you on Facebook?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it. I saw you eating that chocolate bar during that wellness activity. Talking about healthy nutrition and everything.
You don't look like this eating banana smoothie.
I just want you to know that I was.
Takes a lot of work.
It takes a lot of work.
Thanks, thank you. As far as highlights, Tropicana Beach, it's that time of year in Crystal River Middle School. It was, it was a great opportunity to step back into the classroom, so to speak, and listen to the different talented students that were represented. And Eileen Jenkins, she knows how to touch those students and motivate. It was, it was a great experience to be a judge there. And I look forward to participating again next week.
What school was that?
That was over at Crystal River Middle School, sixth grade.
Citrus Springs.
I thought it was.
When I said.
You said Crystal River.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I do it all the time. You know that. Or Mr. Walker, it's still Mr. Walker.
It was, it was Citrus Springs. I used to teach at Crystal River Middle School and I did the sixth grade.
I don't miss.
Remember doing the sixth grade Tropicana? It was just fun going back. And the topics were outstanding, very creative. It was, judging is a very tough spot to be in.
I get to judge soon.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you. That was a highlight.
I mentioned Crystal River High School SAAC. And I was at the meeting, they voted to buy some tests for the Avid program to help them with the ACT and SAT. So I know you.
Very much.
And they also voted to get a poster maker and some microphones for the course. And I hope to listen to their course, but the mics aren't that good. But they voted to get some mics now so we'll have some good performances on stage that you can hear. Hope real well now. Second thing, tonight, and I don't know if any of us are going to make it, from 6 to 8 at the Central Florida College, the senior art show is, is taking place, 6 to 8. And if we can make it, it's fantastic to go to. Third thing, congratulations to everybody in this building. Every year, the Salvation Army, you know, has a fun drive for Christmas. And part of the drive is also what they call the angel tree. And this building participates every single year in it. And you collect, or you go out and buy presents for children. You have a little angel, it tells what the angel wants, and you go out and buy the presents for that angel, bring it in, and then we take it over to the Salvation Army. Well, they have a breakfast saying thank you to the people that, who participate. And Citrus County's school board, this building, not just the school board, the school board just said, yeah, but this building came in in second place.
All right.
So you do some, give ourselves a clap here. And let's see, anything else? I think, I think that's it.
Okay, so we are working away at Golden Citrus. We're going to have our committee meeting tomorrow where the winners are going to be selected. And then I'm going to be very busy writing scripts and then giving, and Mr. Simon's coordinating all the nomination packages for the, for the judges and for the newspaper. And we're still on, on the 24th, and Ms. Bryant, you said you couldn't be there, and you have to go.
And I want you to explain to them that I'm busy representing Citrus County. I'm not at the movies.
So we have some great nominations again this year, and it's always really exciting. And I appreciate all of your nominations, and I will give them to Christophe Belton on half the circle.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Such a, I had a parent recently, I'm sorry, did I?
No, I'm sorry.
I had a parent recently, just because I want to follow up with this before I get into mine, that was talking about how frustrating it is that there is all these wonderful sports, you know, banquets at the end of the year, awards that they get, and they said, you know, and we have so little for the academic side of really standouts in our district. And Golden Citrus is really, that was where you all, it came about, so. I had the pleasure of accompanying my son to Tallahassee a week ago, who was a page, and while he was doing his page work, I was doing some lobbying. And actually, I shouldn't say, Ms. Vicki and I were doing it. Sometimes it was with the very same individual that we were doing it. And proud to know that we stood together, though, even if we got nowhere at times. There are some bills that I know you've been keeping up with, the Florida School Board Association and with Ruth, and they'll maybe be a different conversation for another time about still a little frustration I have with the information and.
What, what information?
Yeah. And that's really what's going on, because I would be sitting in committees where there was critical times that the information needed to get out to us to contact, and there was nothing. There was one committee that, and this is what this is in part about, a bill that has potentially going to have cost to us, that is going to change the way we have deciding our textbooks, and we'll send Mr. Clotter over the edge, and it would be for a very, very valid reason, would, is Senate Bill 864, which is the instruction materials for K-12 public education, which is House Bill 921. Florida School Board Association and the Florida PTA have been adamantly against this bill, these bills. It was introduced primarily in the Senate and has now, it has made it through all of its committees in the Senate. Its companion bill had a strike all about a week ago, and the strike law was very positive in this fact that it corrected some of our concerns. But here's what the upshot is. It would require that we would do away with the state adoptions catalog and the assistance of having the state who, their, the reason that we have them right now is they make the standards, they make the assessment. And so to ensure that districts are having that same piece of the curriculum, we, as you know, choose from that catalog. This would do away with that process and then would mandate that there are specific people, non, in the non-instructional area, that must serve on a curriculum textbook committee. And each of us as school board members would be required to appoint a community member to be a part of that process. It is riddled with new unfunded mandates, but one of the things that it interestingly does is it's being done with the idea of local control. I argue to say it's not local control. It's really forced, it's forcing us to do away with representative government, because we were all elected to make decisions. Statute would in essence take away the superintendent's right to deform the committee, and it would actually mandate that the school board now is a part of that committee process. That's actually in violation of what our statutes have been, where we are not part of that. So it, as a result, it hasn't. Now, right now, on Friday, it will go for a Senate vote. It has moved through and it's going through its last committee in the House. The hope is, is if it, if the bills are completely contrary to one another, then we're okay, because they probably then won't work, work out in conference. If the House now strike laws and adopts the Senate's version, and that's very possible, because the sponsor in the House is the Senate's president's son, then we, we have a serious situation. So here's another one of those things where I would tell you, really keep an eye on it this week, because it is riddled with challenges. And if you're not aware of it, look it up. While I was there, and this one just still baffles me, the House passed the student eligibility for extracurriculars activities, which is actually House Bill 533. This bill mandates that school districts must accept any public charter or private student to any public school activity, sports, band, that their school does not have. So currently, if they don't have any sports programs, then they are currently by law entitled to come into the public schools. This would simply say if they don't have that specific program, they would be entitled. But here's the kicker. They are allowed, the parent chooses the school that they get to compete or be a part of. That passed overwhelmingly in the House. It has already passed the House. Right now, it is stalled in the Senate. It is hopeful that, we hope that it stays stalled in the Senate, because, I'm sorry, this is another one of those where now, if I want to play for Citrus High School, I live in Krista River, and go go Krista River Private School, we have a recruiting issue. We have a serious recruiting issue.
Well, we were up there, we went up during the school board session, and the Florida School Board Association, they were very proactive with giving us those talking points. And we did take the time to meet with our legislators as far as trying, trying to be the voice to help put a roadblock in front of some of that stuff. And I definitely appreciate continued watch on those. From, looking at it from right now.
The House passed it after you left. The House passed it. And I mean, they didn't just simply pass it, they overwhelmingly passed it, and their comment was, let the children play.
Well, and I definitely.
And so the concern that we've continuously had is that, well, the answer is, is you need to hope is that now the Senate listens to you.
So at this point, or.
Because if the Senate, if the Senate moves forward on this, that, no, no, these are things as individual board members. You need to be emailing, contacting.
The idea that the last time we drafted out one letter.
This isn't going to be, this is the one. Right now, the board members, I can tell you that, for example, on Senate Bill 864, our own Florida School Board Association's lobbyist, which in that case, it was actually the CEO and president of the Florida School Board Association, when he spoke against it, they basically called him on the carpet and said that, well, clearly you're saying you don't want local control then, and they just riddled him up and down in committee. And really was, in far as I was concerned, inappropriate to him. So, because he was speaking for us.
What about the Florida, I meant the.
FSBA, they find him, they're finding him.
Well, except on the floor of the House, they were told that they said, accepted it.
The Florida High.
That was what we said, Ms. Vicki, I think, I don't know if you recall, actually said, that was what, that was what a representative stated on the floor.
Well, that's a lie.
So the lips are moving.
I'm still trying to understand, at this point, I.
You need to contact your senator about it, or you need to contact them to say, but again, here's an issue where as school board members, we continue to tell our representatives one thing.
Right.
And they're doing the opposite.
And what you were saying about information, we are not getting the information. We can go on site to find out what's going on, but there, we have a service that.
Well, Ruth, I mean, Ruth at the end of the day is not, it's too late. By the time Ruth does it, I can tell you, I was watching committees for weeks and weeks, but Ruth will give you one synopsis, but she's not telling you that right now it's meeting, it's through committee, right now, this is the person in the committee. Because remember, the chairs of the committees are important.
Here's a service, I'll bring that service to the next meeting, but there's a service that generates.
And, and they're giving that, but they're, but it's, it's our job too, that if we are wanting to have an input, we have to contact those chairs. We need to get to those committee members and tell them how we feel, because if it gets through committee, at this point, it's getting to the floor and it's typically being voted and approved.
You know, school districts pay a lot of money to be members of FSBA and FEDs and all those, and I get griefs also, but sometimes they're a day late and a dollar short.
And they're, yeah, they're, they're just not in time. Some, I will say, one that I'm hoping that we have positive effect, and I think Ms. Alagareta has left, we've had some challenges with, and I want to again thank this board for its support of auto injectors for our students. We've had some legal challenges, and as a result of that, right now, there is two pieces of legislation, SB 1122 and House Bill 1131. By the way, not on the Florida School Board's list of bills, and yet, the number one factor, in my opinion, is going to be schools' children that is trying to remove the legal challenges that we have so that we can get those auto injectors into our schools. Where is FSBA on this? They're nowhere. They're not even, you know, providing it. So I will tell you, and I'll email this out to you, those bills out to you, but contact your representatives about them. Contact more than just our representatives, because it doesn't help, we need to contact the committee members, the committee chair people, because that's really who's getting those things through.
Their aides.
Their aides are. And, well, and frankly, I mean, even with our local representative, it's the aides that I'm, I'm often talking to, because they're the ones that, that are really having the influential effect. But, you know, one example, and Mr. Blocker knows, because I was up in chambers and texted him a request, as, as many of you know, their staff, House staff, Senate staff, actually fills out analysis on each bill, and it's updated based on what committee changes are done. Well, for example, on the extracurricular activities, their staff report says that no FEFP funds were used in extracurricular activities. And so therefore, it was perfectly fine for a non-public school student to be involved in that, because there was no cost involved.
Oh, really?
And that was, I knew I wasn't crazy, but Mr. Blocker was kind enough to just give me some preliminary information, but that was their own staff analysis said that it wasn't. So it's, it's challenging, because of course, they're, you know, even legislators with good intentions are not getting all of that information. So I lift those issues up to you all so that you have those, because there's, there is still four weeks left in session, Ms. Vicki. I know you're counting those days, and there's still some critical pieces, aside from the budget, that are, that are working their ways. I think, as a lot of you know, if it's, if it's not out of subcommittee now, it's probably not moving much farther at this point.
I mean, our face to face.
And what about the voucher issue that came?
The voucher is, oh, it's, it's not only come back, it has come back in force. Oh, yeah. And I was there because it was in appropriations, educational appropriations in K-12, where they just brought in tons of private school and charter students with shirts and sad faces saying how, you know, they needed this to be implemented for the betterment. And I have no problem, except that we have unequal standards in those schools. We do not have the same standards, and I know I'm speaking to the choir on this, but, and that is where, as we continue to have PICO money, it's still not really made much impact. I have to say, I appreciate Commissioner Putnam, supported the PTA in supporting, funding PICO money into the public schools, but you didn't see some of our, you know, to me, some of the appropriations, educational appropriations people, they had no interest in supporting. So it's a, it is frustrating, because I can tell you, having those face to faces, they're not interested.
So you're saying, looking at just that statement, the face to face didn't seem to make a positive impact, looking at the letter writing, again, we're still being encouraged to try to email, reach out to them.
I think that any of us that have any influence, it's still better to have common. I truly am always asking parents, because parents and constituents often have greater power than we do.
That's very powerful.
Because we go up there and they just see us as one collective.
Well, and back to the example that you just gave with the students, and you, with the description of the sad faces, students make such an impact, they really, kids can get things, they're persuasive. So maybe the voices and the faces of the kids.
PTA brings the faces in, and they just see that those kids, they see public school kids as just other lobbyists.
I agree.
It's, it's frustrating, because if it comes from the Florida School Board Association, if it comes from the FEA, if it comes from PTA, they seem to clump us all as just those that are.
Filing up the problem.
Yep. Get on board. And it's, it's frustrating.
Yeah, I definitely.
It's frustrating. So with that, Ms. Emmett. Oh, you're going up, aren't you?
Yeah, I'll tell you about that in a second. First of all, I just want to bring light back to the Golden Citrus Awards, and I'm sitting here in the past, just kind of nonchalantly, says we're getting together tomorrow, but I know how many hours she spends.
Not yet, I'm getting her.
I know how many hours she spends, I know how many hours she spent with Mr. Simon, and I know how many hours you've recruited to Rotary and other groups to get a part of this so that it will be an ongoing event. So I thank you for that, because even today at Rotary, we were talking about the amazing kids who are honored that night. So thank you for carrying that torch on and on. I too, I went to Tallahassee last week, I spent quite a bit of time with Senator Monford, who is always a rip, and he's been with all the board members that he had met with of mine. And, and then I spent quite a bit of time with Pam Stewart, Commissioner Stewart, and it's just one of those things that every single day is a different day. You know, we get up there, superintendents as a group, and we beg and plead, give us a year, give us a year, and that's not going to happen. So, and we talked about the Florida High School, and I'm sure some legislator son didn't get to play ball, and I would probably call that the T-Boe Law. So that was a fine example. Tomorrow, I'm headed to Tallahassee, because I've been invited by First Lady Ann Scott to have dinner at the Governor's Mansion.
Really?
So I will represent you all very well. And we'll see where that goes.
There's some great pictures of you on the, on the internet.
Is it an occasion, or are you just inviting for dinner?
Community leaders, they've invited a few, and so I'm going up tomorrow afternoon.
Well, clearly, some people rank and some people don't.
Well, do that.
Exactly.
So I'll give a report when I get back on how that went, and in fact, I'm taking Michael with me.
Do they know you're not a Republican?
They, I think he does, after last conference.
Maybe why she's inviting.
He's going after the Democratic vote. So I'll give you an update when we return and let you know how that went.
Very good.
Okay. Also, Bruce Sheffield or Pat or somebody was handed these tickets for May 16.
They've come out from the.
From the Chronicle. This is the athletic award ceremony, it's Friday, May 16. It's $10, so if anybody wants a ticket, I can leave these with Linda Rorami.
This is the comparable to.
And if anybody wanted, this is the comparable to the Golden Citrus Awards. May 16. Somebody said there was something else going on, but I didn't look at the calendar yet. Okay, so I'll leave these with Linda. All right?
Anything else, Morgan?
No.
Anything else, we're adjourned.